Meeting to order. Okay. Slightly retarded because I gotta find my notes. Um, do we have a sign up sheet for visitors who want to speak?
We do.
Would it be possible to put that on the table here? Because I ran in and didn't see it. So, um, we'll start, I would like to invite, I'm just gonna put this up here. I'd like to invite any visitors who might want to speak tonight to sign in. That way we'll have your name and. Name and serial number.
There's, there's a pen right up there too.
All right. Uh, welcome everyone. Hello, Gordies. Hello, everyone. Um. We have three, two visitors and a guest. Um, I wanted to start by leading us in a grounding exercise, if that's okay. I know it can feel goofy, but it helps me. And if you would play along with me. Open it. Um. Thank you, everyone, for attending. I wanted to share, um, like a brief reflection. I call this to order and then I'll do a roll call after, is that okay? Yeah. Um, I've been thinking a lot in preparation for today's meeting. Um, and I wanted to ground us in our equity non-educational. Um, and our community, I've been thinking particularly about our equity values of listening to each other and sharing power, which are always on my mind, because when we share power and listen to each other, there's greater opportunity for individual growth. And our community is stronger and more connected. And I think we need that in these anxious times. So, thank you, everyone, for being here. Um, you don't have to work for us. You don't have to be here. None of us has to be here, we all choose it. And that's pretty powerful. That's really amazing. Um, and I've been thinking about that a lot. We all come from very different stories and backgrounds, and yet we are here together in this singular moment at every meeting of shared dedication to our community, our schools and our kids. And I think that's really powerful. And we usually are looking at our agendas and getting the work done. So I would invite everyone in the room to look around and observe each other and see the strength and expertise and commitment that's in this room. If you're visitors and you don't know each other, if you wish, I'd encourage you to introduce yourselves to each other, because I think we have some regulars here. I'm thankful for each of you. I'm thankful for our community. And I feel so much gratitude here, knowing that our goal is to create a safe space here for anyone to express their views, to be courageous advocates for what you care about and to make confident decisions. That's what I hope. In community with each of you. And that is all. Okay, roll call. Chris Brans.
Here.
Katie Allen. Here. Karen Crand.
Here.
Danielle Bailey.
Here.
And Carla is here. Uh, moving on to the pledge of allegiance, if you wish. Please stand and join in reciting the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to our United States of America,
A little bit more support and assistance from having an adult attending classes with them. Sometimes that adult is standing back and is more a guide on the side. And is able to step in and to help with things. And other times, students may need a little bit more support in which they're doing more of the direct learning side by side. And so if that is something that a student would qualify for. We certainly try to carry on the same consistent things that we do right during the regular school year. In Summer Academy because again, we want the students to be successful in the program.
Yeah, yeah, please.
So just to follow up, and I don't know if Kelly might be the better person, so whoever. But how many, what percentage of students who participated, who needed that special support were participating as part of E S Y? Extended school year and how many of them were just participating by choice? And then receiving those supports because it was appropriate, but not necessarily truly. Like an extended school year program.
Right, and so there are two separate things. And I can let Kelly talk too, but so we interned, we had thirteen students who we identified. That would benefit from some additional paraprofessional support and guidance in the classroom settings. And then you talked about the extended school year and E S Y. We had a, we had a handful of students who participated with another teacher, Ms. Wagner. During the Summer Academy program, but again, she's offering services based on their needs, which was separate. However, they also had the opportunity to be a part of the Summer Academy program. So for example, you might have a student who participated, who selected four classes to be a part of. And they maybe needed thirty minutes of additional support. And so Ms. Wagner would come into the classroom and be able to call that student or. Whatever based on their needs that they would need additional support with.
Kelly, did you wanna?
I did, because there were students that received E S Y services. Here while they were at Summer Academy and E S Y Extended School Year is, is different than Summer Academy. It's different than summer school. And it doesn't always have to fit within the weeks of Summer Academy either. Nor do those services have to be delivered here. So we did have students that received E S Y services that. Did not receive them here at Glen Hills. We had a couple that were receiving health services at their community daycare. We had some students receiving speech and language services. Some students receiving academic intervention from a special education teacher. The number of students was not high. Extended school year services is really. It's not common. So, and there are some, a number of factors we have to look at when considering extended school year services. I'm just playing up my spreadsheet of students, but just to kind of give you an idea. We had about seven students receiving extended school year services this year. And like I said, it was a, it was a range of needs. Some of those speech and language needs, some of those academic needs.
So I just wanna make sure I understand. So the student wasn't, yes, wasn't doing the E S Y. But didn't wanna opt for Summer Academy and had specific things that we were supporting them.
Yep, we were openly embracing.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
I'm done, thank you. Can I ask you a couple of follow up questions on point here? How are E S Y services funded? They just come out of our general fund?
E S Y services are funded twenty seven and are category.
So those are services we get reimbursed at the thirty one percent. That's a thirty something percent rate. And then I had a quick question about, I think it's a good question about enrollment in popular classes. It's something that always sort of buzzes where it seems like it's a first come, first served model. For the really popular courses. And it seems to me a more equitable model would be to allow to have a deadline for signing up, have everyone dump and then do a lottery. And I'm curious whether you've ever considered that, whether there are barriers to doing that, et cetera.
I have not considered it. One of the things that. I really placed a lot of emphasis in was just ensuring that we only had twenty four students. Which as you know, in some cases is even higher than what we would have during our regular school year in a classroom setting. The other piece is just, we had a lot, we have a lot. In order to offer the number of courses that we offer, we do have a lot of split age groups. And split grade levels within a course. And so ensuring that there was like an opportunity for twelve fourth graders, for example, and twelve fifth graders. To be able to sign up to make the twenty, the number twenty four. So I had not, I, I guess. If I'm thinking about equitable and I'm not opposed to doing random drawings. But then I think I have to look at doing that for each class that we offer. And not just specific classes, because we don't know. I had it, let me back up for just a minute. So every January, teachers get to propose courses. And every year, the courses are different. There are different titles, there are different classes taught by different people. And so we don't necessarily know which ones are gonna be popular. What I think I'm observing as more of a trend tends to be. The ones that are either outdoors and or involved, a lot of physical, physical movement. Or Legos tend to be really popular ones, right? And so this year, hopefully, I asked the teacher, Mr. Matthews, if he'd be so kind as to open up a session. For K four and K five students, which is something that he's never taught before. And we talked a little bit about personal comfort levels and what that feels like, right? Because not everybody is comfortable teaching all of the areas, grade levels. And, and so there are some that I kind of can see a trend with. It doesn't connect that it's gonna be offered every year. So it's hard to pinpoint which ones will be the most popular. But I think if I was gonna be equitable, then I would have to do that for all of the classes, not just.
Right, for any of that.
Right, and it's over enrolled.
Any that are over enrolled is where you would have to do it for. It's, I, it's just something I, I'd like you to explore. I mean, maybe it's not cost effective. Or maybe the administrative time required is just so great. But you know, the problem is you, you have parents who work. You may not be, you know, it's like trying to get the good seat on Southwest. You got parents who are like hovering for when it opens. And, and the reason they're able to hover is because they're not working. Or they're in a space where they can do that. Then you have parents who really want their kids to have the same opportunity for access. You just can't do that. And they're coming in and by the time they sign in. To all the good, you know, that, all the good classes are gone, right? Like this like feeling. So it's just something I wanna post out there, something to think about, that for classes that overfill, that. It feels like a lottery system would be. A stronger model.
So Carly, can you just clarify and help me understand, when you say classes that overfill. Are you saying once the class has reached the maximum of twenty four?
I'm saying that if like thirty people try to register for a class that can hold twenty. It's in a, in a perfect equity model, to me, you wouldn't take the first twenty. You would take the names of everyone who tries to sign up for it and you would draw. Because then it's random and no one has a, you know, first mover advantage. Right? Because parents and caregivers have access to their devices to try to sign up for Summer Academy at different times.
Right.
So that, that's my concern.
Right, and I guess, and I thank you for clarifying. I hear what you're saying.
I'm not saying keep filling classes to kingdom come.
No, no, no.
Not at all. I'm just saying when you have a class that overfills, right, that more people try to sign up for it than their space for. That first come, first served doesn't feel like the most fair model.
Right, right. No, no, no. And the, I'm, the reason I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to process through and reflect at the same time. Because right now, the way we have it set up is we have it set up to stop at twenty four.
Oh, so you can't even.
Overfill. So you're.
So you wouldn't even know every ten people are trying to.
Right, right, right. So either that or I'd have to get really crafty and I'll be sitting there for hours trying to figure out.
There's time, there's time.
Oh, but definitely great things and definitely things for me to be proud of. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Add on to her idea. Like, could you have? I remember back when it was like a paper model.
Right, that's right.
Because we're old. But you could sign up, this class looks full, but could I be on a waitlist? Like, could you have? Go back to a waitlist and then you'd know if there are more people trying to get into that.
And we do have waitlists. Often friends, people will call and we, we will start a waitlist for classes. But yes, I, we don't wanna go back to the paper pencil model.
There'd be like a field on, on the signup. They're like, okay, here are the four classes I'm signing up for.
And here are alternate choices.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Wondering if you have alternate choices though, and that was like.
I'll try to find the perfect paper next.
Where you go. I just wanted to ask, the communications, were they available? Are they posted online for anybody to look at? Or were they simply for enrolled Summer Academy programming?
They were simply for enrolled Summer Academy program and we pushed them all out through the Infinite Campus. So we had a group that was developed just for students that enrolled in Summer Academy. And so we sent it out to those families and caregivers.
It might be nice to get that up on the website. It's like a nice promotional program, right? We might be, I don't know if we have capacity, but we might have increased interest next year. People are shopping on our website or browsing it and found it.
Yeah.
I know, I would have loved to see those as they came across, so it would be fun to, to take a look at. I'm not being critical, but I'm. So.
All great ideas. I love the feedback.
Oh, speaking of feedback, sorry. Did you engage students or families or teachers for feedback from the program ended?
Or throughout or?
Uh, no, I did not. I only engaged the staff because we had a female. And so the staff we got feedback from. I know there were informal check ins from the kids and then I would ask kids. Like as we stand outside in the front, how was your day? What did you enjoy most about your day? You know, anything, any new adventures, anything new and exciting? So it was more informal. I have tried, I have done. I'm sure you are aware of it. But I have done surveys before and that's for families too. Yeah, but I did not do that.
Anyone else?
I need to wait for you guys to roll.
Any visitors have any questions or comments on this topic?
Actually, I had one more question. I'm sorry. This might not be for you, but have we ever had staff attracted to come to work for our district? Because they participated in Summer Academy?
Yes, yes. And we have recruited people to at least come forward to the interview process. And to be a part of our interview process and some of them we have recruited for our district. Excellent, because they were the best.
Because once you come in here, you don't wanna leave. All right, thank you so much. Thank you for taking the hot seat.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item four, items for discussion, consideration and possible board action. A, resolution, authorizing school budgets, the revenue limits by four point five million per year for two years for non-recurring purposes.
Yes.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For visitor participation.
I did.
You didn't hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were pointing to Karn. I apologize. Come on.
Oh, Dr. Smith, Dr. Smith, come back.
Question. I apologize, Mr. Martin. I misunderstood your gesture. I thought you were telling me about Karn.
So, one thing, just as a recommendation on next year's signup. There should probably be something for, say, parents that are signing up. Having a place to recommend improvements for next year's process. Since you all and even Dr. Smith probably. Don't have to deal with all of the frustrations parents might have to deal with on their end. So hearing from them directly would probably be the best way to get recommendations on improvement. And two, if there was a lottery system, just some of the other potential issues you'd have to address. It's what happens if you have enough capacity for five hundred students to attend, but say seven hundred end up trying to enroll. What are you going to do for the extra two hundred? Would you cut down on? Number of classes they could attend and send them home early? What would you do with that? There's some other lottery stuff, issues we'd have to address and then. That's it.
Okay, thank you for those comments, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
Okay, and I apologize again, Mr. Martin. I didn't mean to overkill. All right, moving on to item four, the resolution. And then Michelle.
So we are proposing a resolution for the board's consideration to. Increase our, our revenue limit as specified in the statutes by four million. Five hundred thousand per year for two years in a non-recurring referendum. And so the first piece that we're looking at is the. Motion to frame to consider would be actually authorizing that exceeding of the revenue limit. This was done after careful consideration of looking at some budget forecast scenarios. Looking at what we need to do to maintain a level of programming for students after making significant cuts less, right? To see to bring down our operational costs, knowing that we did not want to fully remove all of our programming and operations for students. So as a way to help to, to cushion that as we study ourselves over the next two years.
All right. Michelle, would you like to add anything at this time? Okay, all right, I. One second, while I gather myself here. As I understand it then, we have two agenda items. Item one is to authorize internally exceeding the revenue limit. By four point five million for two years. If that passes, if the board approves that, then we would move on to. A vote on taking it to referendum on the November ballot, right? Okay, so that's the process that's in front of us. I think what I'd like to do is, number one, to thank you for the hard work that has gone into this. It's impossible to capture here. How much work has been done in less than two months by Michelle and Anna? We are climbing up a big mountain and. There's a lot of work that's not happening at board meetings, as all of us know, including all of us participating in that work. And so I just wanna thank you for, for leading that effort. With expertise and. You know, just a lot of confidence building work. I'm gonna start by letting, by having board members comment. If it's okay with everyone, I'm gonna start this time. Oh, right, we need a motion first. Is there a motion?
And so it'd be a motion to approve the resolution. Sure. I will move to approve a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit. By four million, five hundred thousand per year for two years for non-recurring purposes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. And if it's okay with everyone, I'm gonna start. This is a big referendum ask and I think it's worth taking some time to. Express our views as board members as to why we support or don't support. This resolution. And so I, I, I know we've all given a tremendous amount of thought to this and I wanna share my thoughts. And they start with this sort of fundamental fact to me. Which is that public school budgets are being gutted in Wisconsin. We've been subjected to unreasonably low state spending limits for decades. Not only is the state capping our spending, but it also mandates that we devote a significant and growing portion. Of our district budget to private schools. We spent over six hundred thousand dollars last year on private school vouchers and transportation alone. That doesn't even include the additional special education costs our district foots to support students in private school. If voucher component dreams come true, these numbers will only get bigger and bigger. Even as increasing amounts of taxpayer money are being siphoned out to our district, out of our district to private schools. At the same time, state imposed spending limits on public schools have not kept up with rising costs. If public schools have been allowed to just keep up with inflation in the last decade, we would be spending about. Twenty three hundred dollars more per student per year than we're currently allowed. That's about two million dollars a year of lost real spending power over the last ten years. So it's no wonder public schools across Wisconsin are facing a fiscal cliff. School districts have to ask local taxpayers for permission to spend more than the unreasonable limits imposed by the state. It's not a sign of local failure. It's baked into our systems. As a result, about eighty percent of school districts in Wisconsin rely on voter referenda to increase school funding. Including us and every school district in the North Shore. And that's the world we live in. Having said that, we all recognize, I certainly recognize that our district is part of the story, not only because of those realities. But also because of a failure of competency in our business office. For two years, we spent more money than we had and that happened on my watch as a new board member. Even though I wasn't directly responsible for those failures, I hold myself accountable. It's my job as a member of this board to help our district get back on solid ground. So that we can continue to serve our students and families and staff effectively. The money we overspent was not lost to fraud or investment. We spent it on teacher raises. We spent it on robust programming. We hired and retained excellent staff and I don't regret that. I do regret that I wasn't given accurate information about our financial status, savings, revenues, expenditures. I'm angry about that. I wish I had been experienced enough to dig harder. When I was reassured by our then-business manager that we could afford new costs that were being added to our budget. We're experienced now. And we've been digging in and making hard choices since we learned in January of our budget crisis. We cut about a dozen positions this spring, saving about a million dollars in employee costs. We're continuing to evaluate where additional savings can be found without undermining student experiences. We've revamped and updated our board's fiscal policies to ensure stronger oversight and fidelity. In the business office, we've cleaned house. We have a new management team to oversee district budget finances and operations. In July, Michelle Brown joined us as our business manager and Anna Young stepped up to become our interim superintendent. With these two strong women at the helm, we're observing competency at every turn. Anna and Michelle are quickly cleaning up fears of failed bookkeeping and financial management. So that we are finally obtaining an accurate picture of our fiscal status. The board has also been working really hard since January to fully understand our budget situation. We have examined prior and current budgets in detail. We have doggedly and persistently questioned everything. We have dug into evidence-based bid budget models. Thank you Baird for providing those. That show us pathways to solvency and success as well as pathways to failure. In the midst of all this, I have reflected personally at length. On our educational mission, our kids, our community values, our property values. I have walked up a steep school finance learning curve and after careful consideration. I've concluded we need to spend this extra money if we can and take it to referendum for voters. The additional funds, the four point five million dollars for two years would allow us to maintain programs. That are community values, included, including beloved music and à la d'art programs. Strong S E L supports for our students, social and emotional learning supports, language and math specialists. Smaller class sizes, paraprofessional supports for teachers. These all cost money. The additional money would also allow us to rebuild our front-end balance to appropriate levels. Through a referendum that could be on the November ballot, our community can tell us. Whether they want our school district to maintain our thriving programs and educational strengths. Or whether they want us to roll back services in our district to a bare educational minimum. With all the potential impact that could have on our student's success, our community reputation and our property values. To me, that's what's really on the line and it's the right time for voters to speak. Two years, which would be the term of this referendum ask, is a relatively short timeframe for an operational referendum. But if it passes, the funds would keep us strong while we evaluate budget needs carefully and thoroughly. With the participation and engaged voices of community stakeholders. Two years gives us time to explore efficiencies, come back to voters with a comprehensive plan. For long-term solvency and success that minimizes our property tax burden going forward. And I know that's a lot, but I felt I needed to say it all. And it's why I support the proposals that are on the table today and I will be voting in favor of them. Done. Thank you. All right, should we just go down the line? Danielle, I'm trying to, I don't wanna.
I'll echo what you said. I think that you said it. Well, and succinctly, I'll speak to the community piece or the community engagement piece that I'm thinking about, which is. Just to acknowledge that we need community engagement and support to chart a path forward for our schools and our. And we cannot waste any time in charting that path forward. So the first step is upon us. It is. Approving these resolutions, I believe. And then our next step needs to be outreach and strong community engagement. And ensuring that our community is informed and empowered to answer the referendum questions in November. Should this board approve the resolutions tonight? I believe strong schools mean strong communities. Thriving schools mean thriving communities. And as a district, we are all committed to that mission, vision and values that were created in collaboration. With community members as a board. And I know our administration, our staff and teachers are committed to fostering an environment where everyone truly belongs and thrives. We are, sorry. So I think this piece, this community involvement engagement piece is. We need to engage the community and ask them, how, how best can we support our students and our schools? Such that our kids get the opportunity, the exceptional education they deserve, the opportunity to thrive. I think our board is engaged and passionate. I think we are committed to being transparent and involving stakeholders in a meaningful way. And that we cannot wait to address these urgent financial needs. And that's why I would also vote to approve these resolutions tonight. But you get it, you get it.
Thank you.
Karn, any thoughts?
So first, thank you for articulating so clearly what, we have two prompts that we have been able to identify since that. Stunning moment in January when we all sat in the Zoom meeting and things were revealed to us that. Have, that we've been dealing with ever since then. The first one that we knew at that point in time was that we had a massive budget error, right? And then, of course, we discovered in the meantime, all the other issues with that office and. And that was dealt with right away. Like, we were working on that within the same week, just for clarity, in case anybody's wondering. And we are moving in a really good direction and thankful for the leadership we have now in both of the spaces. We are a district that is very whole child centered. But we are not blind as a board or as an administration to the fiscal responsibility that we bear. And I wanted to be very clear to our community that both of those things weigh heavily for us. Because those are our two prompts. I mean, those are the things that we have to keep centered. And those are heavy things when you're in a situation like this. It is absolutely true. And if anyone's paying attention to the news, you see every election, there are referendums for school districts. There are referendums for emergency services. There is a funding issue in our state. It's particularly designed. To address public school education funding. And they continue to load us with responsibilities that are unfunded. Unless the taxpayers fund them. So that's where we're at. We're making up for some lost ground from bad information that led to decisions that I. Didn't participate in all of them, but with support. We have to keep good teachers to have our students centered programming. And also, we need to be able to have really clear fiscal information, which is what we're doing. We're clarifying these next two years if this passes and we are able to move into a space. Of this referendum coming forward and passing. That gives us two years to create clarity. And be able to develop a good sense of what we need to do moving forward. Because we have two years of opacity. and be able to develop a good sense of what we need to do moving forward, because we have two years of opacity. We don't truly understand what, what the details are. We have good audits, if we've figured that stuff out, we've clarified, but we need to reestablish our baselines. That's just where we're at right now, so I think it's a tough place to be, but we are not alone, we just have a couple of pieces that are unique to us. And then for the rest of it, we're in good company, unfortunately, and anyone who would like to in the community, please feel free to talk to your state representatives about your public school funding.
And to that point, you've heard me ruminating, I, I do wanna work on sort of a grassroots, North Shore school board and community-based kind of advocacy effort to the state level, where we are allowed to advocate as individuals and to start shedding light on some of these funding challenges that public schools are sharing in, so I'm guessing all five of us would, would show up.
So, um, this, like, this to address how I've heard from the community that we should just be finding ways to cut and cut and cut. The fact is, we don't really know how much we would need to cut to be solvent, because there's so much still up in the air, we don't know what we're looking at. And so what we're really gonna ask the community for is to give us time to figure out what to cut and to make it smart cuts, so we're not having to try to hire to refill positions that we shouldn't have cut. And to try to rebuild programs that are going strong right now, and would have to have a gap year or two to cut them, maybe we don't need to cut them. So that, that's really what this represents to me. Also, four point five million, if you look at the surrounding communities and the asks from other places in the state, this is a really modest asking. And it's just to buy us time so that we can be really fiscally responsible and make the right cuts that don't devalue our district unnecessarily.
Thank you, Katie. Chris?
I wanna first focus on state issues, and Carla, this is something similar to what you said, but just using a different way of looking at it. If, if state aid had kept up with inflation since two thousand and nine, we would receive three thousand, three hundred dollars more per student, and that would work out to, you know, your overall total that you gave. Yep, in two thousand and nineteen, there was a bipartisan blue ribbon commission, and they recommended that special education be reimbursed at sixty percent. Right now, it's reimbursed at only thirty-three percent for us and ninety percent for private schools. That same bipartisan commission recommended that we count English language learners for one point two membership rate, and also for low-income students at one point two membership rate. That is also not happening. I would, um, you know, obviously, we need to do some advocacy, and we actually have an agenda, I don't, later on in the meeting, about that. In terms of our, our own, in our own school and our own issues, kind of starting as a community member, not on the board, I heard some I-don't-knows when budget questions were asked, and I feel like I heard them a couple of meetings, and some meetings in a row. I don't hear that anymore. I send a simple question, and I get a three-paragraph response that is not only clear, but also intended to educate me to be a more effective board member. That in turn is sent to everybody, so that we can all become more financially astute. You know, our last, our last workshop where we, we worked on finances was a very deep dive. And more than I would, than I have seen in just listening to general WASB presentations or reading the, the WASB financial book, so I think there are a lot of things, you know, happening that are really good. And I guess my final point is, we know that there have been some significant cuts. If we don't do this, we'll need to make more significant cuts, and when I look at democracy and allowing people to make choices, the system is designed to let voters decide how much they want to fund their schools. And to me, cutting off the choice and saying not to advance this forward is taking voter choice away. It's saying that our, that we're not gonna offer the robust, sometimes cutting-edge best practice. Not that there isn't room to improve, but when you hear the education buzzwords, those are things that this district is working on. I don't wanna take those away without giving voters a choice in that.
Thank you, Chris. Visitor participation, are there any visitors who wish to speak?
Michelle Sorcey, who's a resident at six five two five North Range Line Road in Glendale, first wants to let the board and administrators know that Michelle believes they're working for the best and they got an awful budget. However, in relation to this resolution, what is the plan once the two-year mark expires for this, um, this excess? So, um, what's the plan after two years so we don't fall behind?
I'll, I'll let Anna and Michelle, and/or Michelle, take that.
I think going back to what Ms. Bailey talked about in terms of thinking about this need to engage the community and what our schools need to look like, absolutely is going to help structure how we can become fiscally responsible. Where do we look at, how in these next two years do we look at where our assets and liabilities are? And how do we start to streamline our practices to meet the need and call for the community for the type of education they want for their students? So that was built in the time that we're, we're going forward and looking at that. We need that clear picture in order to be able to answer that question, and that may look like making additional cuts, finding efficiencies, while also looking at potential restructuring. So we have options, but we wanna hear the voice of the community and understand that it's an administrative decision, but a community decision.
And, and I would add for clarity, if that's okay, um, that it might involve coming back to the voters with another referendum ask, but we just don't know what that amount would be yet, that's the work that's ahead of us.
And I would add, we have historically had referendum, we currently have a one point five million dollar referendum, and it's our, it's our third historically, or no, fourth or fourth. I was looking for presentation. Real time, but I mean, so historically, we have been exceeding, anyway, it's a lower number right now at one point five. Okay, so we're in our, currently, we are in our third operational, this would be our fourth operational ask.
Yes, I would just add that I think that the, the way the system is set up, that schools are being set to just keep coming back to taxpayers right now, and I don't know if we can expect things to change rapidly at the state level, that would be amazing. But if they don't, and this is the, the new norm, that, like, we're going to do our best to balance that, right, that need for community support with being applicable stewards as well, so.
Um, and I'm gonna commit as a new, fairly new board member, as my whole term ahead, that moving forward, we'll be more prepared, so we're not in this position where we're having to ask you to please support us while we figure it out, figure it out and then ask you next time.
Okay, any more online participants?
Yeah, the, the same resident, so Michelle Sorcey, um, I'm trying to get clarification, so I understand her follow-up response. She says, "If good hope is sold, could only one time instead of two?" And so I'm just trying to, I'm just currently getting clarification on what she meant.
Okay, uh, while she's doing that, um, any participants in person who would like to speak? Uh, Mr. Martin, start with you. Oh, Mr. Beckman? You, you guys aren't wrestle and decide who's coming up first, or I can decide for you.
I'll be brief.
Thank you, Ms. Beckman.
You're welcome.
Take your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone, good to be here. I wish more people are here. Jim Beckman, twenty-two, twenty-six West Arbor Avenue, Glendale, nine. School funding is, short of all, is not a new thing. I can think back thirty-five years ago, we were talking about split same issues, school funding. I've been to many different states, and we're not alone. Minnesota, Illinois, Iowa, different funding formulas, but they all have some of the same scenarios where schools don't have the money, or think they don't have the money, and I don't mean that as a glib comment. But I think what has to happen in our district, and, and you know, I've supported every referendum for years, and as you know, my history. I think transparency is so critical right now. And, and all the ugly stuff that happened and has to come out, unfortunately. And I've talked to many community members that still don't know, how did this happen? Why are they short? What are they doing about it? So there's a lot of people out there that, that don't have kids in school, that don't know how did our district get into this situation? So I think it's critical when you go to your, the community meetings, and hopefully people show up. Hopefully, there's a committee that's gonna be set up for engagement and flyers, you know, the whole routine. I don't know if it'll be supported out there, I, 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 I'm not, not saying I will support it, I mean, I will support it if I've seen the, all the transparency come out, and if you can say that by the end, by November, when people are going to vote, that there is a plan beyond the two years, you know, a five-year plan, that here's where we see our fund balance in five years. Here, what we see our enrollment in five years, do some very honest enrollment projections. And I think those are some of the critical factors, as we know, our funding is based on enrollment, for the most part. More kids we get, the more money we get, our enrollment's declining. I know it's, it's still a three-year rolling average, right? There's still a three-year rolling average on decline, so you don't take it all off in one year, you take a third off every year. So enrollment, enrollment is a big deal. We should also be looking at how do we increase enrollment? How do we stop open enrollment going out to Mapleville or Fox Point or wherever else they're going? So I think those are all things that should be on the table when we come out, when you come out to the public, and some of those questions should be asked, so. And also the tax impact, all of us at Holmes in Glendale saw what our, our rate was, I mean, people in my neighborhood are saying, mine went up fifty percent. We don't know what the tax bill's gonna be at that. Yes, made it fair market value, went up fifty percent on many homes in Glendale. That's gonna be a big number for a lot of people, we said, I'm gonna get our tax bill in December, so I think that number's not out there. Those are things we should talk to the city, what's that impact when you finally come down the bottom line? So, uh, and then what, what is the impact of this four point five? I'm sure you're gonna get to that, you know, per thousand, or whatever. So, just some food for thought.
Thank you.
And, you know, whatever we can do to help, I think we just have to be out there, and, and all the, the onion has to be peeled back totally, and there's gotta be like, oh boy, we got some words, but we're gonna have to talk about those, and how do we move beyond? Because I think you said, the state budget isn't gonna change in the next year. This is what we, the hand we've been dealt, and we've been doing it for years, we've had a deal with state budgets for years, and we're good, we're bad, we're in between, um, don't know, so thanks for listening, guys.
Thank you for those thoughts.
You're welcome.
I, I just want, I just, two sentences, and then I will, okay, sixty seconds. When you talk about the ugliness not being explained, what I hope will happen is that if people listen to Carla's statement and were able to push that out, she, she outlined the, the ugliness, it is not a secret, it is not something we're hiding. It was spending based on inaccurate information, and so that is something we are going to be talking about. And, and just one piece to the enrollment, the, the enrollment data and studies that did happen, um, when we were doing our workaround facilities showed not declining, but a, a flat, flat for some time, not declining.
Which is good.
And that's good.
Which is good right now, and it's happening all over the state, it's declining, but so, I just wanted to, you know, speak to those two things, and hope to get enough information to be an advocate for us.
Yeah, telling you a most accurate projection, two years out, or three years out, like, okay, what's the earth rate, what's all, you know? And so that's what you have to work, thank you.
You're welcome. Reference you to the worksheet, if you didn't have a chance, look at the attachments.
I didn't get a chance.
Yeah, that's okay.
I was heading grass all day today.
I know, right?
Yes, I would.
But it's crazy, it's no revenue, it's not good, it's formatted.
I show you, I got right here.
All right, Mr. Martin, thank you, Jim. Oh, did you clarify? Let's, let's put that on hold, because Mr. Martin is at the mic.
So, to impart, echo what he was saying, that's part of why I was strongly encouraging the board to send out a newsletter, since, kind of like, the board didn't know that you're facing three-point-something million-dollar deficit this year, until it was in your face and impossible to miss. But the information potentially was out there for you to take a look and see, oh, our revenue limit isn't keeping up with impatience, with inflation, oh, our funding is only because federal money is coming out, the information was out there, but not necessarily something that you all would know to go out, look for, until it was just in your face, similar thing happens with community members. They have the information out there that is available to them, but they don't necessarily know it or know where to look for, and that's why I was really strongly encouraging you to get out of the newsletter. Or to, hopefully, before the referendum, to let people know that this is what you've done, this is what you're going to continue to do, this is what the process is gonna go forward looking like, et cetera. For the one point five eight million dollar operating referendum, given how bad prior business reggers screwed stuff up, do you know that was actually levy each year?
That was levy each year, yes. Thank you so much, Mr. Martin. Okay, anyone else in the audience? Oh, okay, let's read them.
Yeah, so, um, Michelle, Michelle Sorcey is, um, her question was in reference to, rather than exceeding our revenue limit by four point five million for two years, what if, would, would selling good hope offset costs enough that one, uh, we could, we would only have to exceed the revenue limit by one year instead of two?
I'm, I'm gonna give that one to Anna.
Yeah, I, I think that is a great question, and I think, uh, looking at the sale of the home is not an immediate response to what we are facing right now, in the sense that, um, number one, we need to explore whether or not that is the right option for our district to make based on some data and some information. The other piece about that is, is the sale of, of a property such as that, considering we have tenants that would need to move out, is not something that could happen with immediacy, without us having to make very significant cuts to programming. We would need to, by April of next year, notify all of our staff, um, if they were being not renewed, and so we would have to really dig in and make those cuts. It also is not necessarily a projected, um, number, there's a projection out there, but it isn't a guarantee, and so, um, to the point of the board, we have educational services and continuum of education that we need to provide for all students in our community, um, and that is not a viable, secure option in order to be able to do that. It is an asset that the district has that we need to explore in these next two years.
Uh, I, I would add that we're going to be getting an update on the Good Hope facility situation next month, so if the community member can join us next month, she'll be able to learn more about, uh, the status of the Good Hope building and property. And anyone follow up to that? Well, I, I think if there's any follow-up, I would encourage her to contact Anna or Michelle directly. And then are there any other online participants? Anyone else here? Any further comments by the board? All right, ready for a vote then? Before us is the motion to approve a resolution authorizing the stool district, stool, the school district budget to exceed revenue limits by four point five million dollars per year for two years for non-recurring purposes. I think I'll do a roll call vote. Uh, we'll start with Chris Robinson.
Aye.
Katie Avalos.
Aye.
Karen Cromwell.
Aye.
Danielle Bailey.
Aye.
And Carla Pennington Cross votes aye. The motion passes. Moving on to item B. Resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of a resolution authorizing the stool district, gosh, school district budget to exceed revenue limits by four point five million dollar per year for two years for non-recurring purposes. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by four point five million dollars per year for two years for non-recurring purposes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, do we need further discussion or explanation of this, Anna or Michelle? Okay, uh, we have one hand up in the audience?
Yes, I'd say you may want to clarify when that operational increase would begin, the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, correct?
Yeah, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six.
I amend my motion to clarify that it be for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Okay, so that is a motion to amend the pending motion.
Do you have to resecond it?
Yes, we have to second the motion to amend.
Second, she didn't, she had a second.
Yeah, she had, we have seconded on the original motion. We now have a motion to amend. And Chris has now seconded that motion to amend. Uh, all in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
So now we have on the table a motion to approve the resolution at length to exceed the revenue limit by four point five million per year for two years for non-recurring purposes for the twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six school years. Right?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board? Any further comments from visitors?
Carla, I want you to have a justice.
Yes.
So for, just for the purpose of the audience, because the board has been looking at this for a long time. When, when anyone is able to have the time to look at the information that's provided within our minutes tonight, the financial information, you will potentially look at twenty-four, twenty-five and think, why do we need to have a referendum for this year? The reason is because the, we're good at the moment because we took that loan out this summer. And so the, we do need those monies to be able to have a healthy school district moving forward. And you will see, um, that document, I think, is a really clear picture of the fact that even with this four point five number in school year twenty-five, twenty-six, um, we still are a little bit in the red. We're much healthier, but we're still kind of coming into our fund balance at that point. So four point five is a conservative number for the budget as we understand it and our needs as we understand them at this point in time. So I just want to make sure people understand that when they're looking at those visuals, just because there isn't red this year doesn't mean that we don't have a need.
Thank you, Karen. Any other comments? Going once, going twice.
Is there anything we should be saying that we're missing?
Do we need to talk about the mill?
Um, we don't have to, but if you wish to address it, you could.
I would rather somebody else.
I, I would say that the, the mill rate, I no longer have my sheet. Jim has it, but someone else has a sheet showing what the mill rate would be with a four point five million dollar resolution.
Yeah.
Oh, right, Michelle. I'm so sorry.
That'd be our in old hat. It's, yeah.
Michelle has the answer.
Um, in the preliminary budget, we were anticipating or projecting a two percent increase in property values overall, which would have given, um, provided a mill rate of seven dollars and twenty-nine cents for this, uh, four point five million additional operational referendum. Um, beer has recently given us updated projections on equalized value for our district, which is a actually, um, River Hills. Village of River Hills, um, is projected to increase and the city of Glendale property values are projected to decrease. Um, overall, projected a slight, um, decrease in property values of point three percent. Uh, point thirty percent. So that would add an additional sixteen cents to that projected mill rate. And, um, property values for the district will not finalize until October. That will have a true, um, number of that. But so estimated between seven point two nine and seven point four five.
Is that just for the first year when the
Yes, that is correct.
And then it goes back down.
Right. So that's an increase, um, seven twenty-nine is an increase of a dollar one point one six over the twenty-three, twenty-four levy rate of six dollars thirteen cents.
And then in the second year of the of this res, of this referendum, it would go back down by
Yeah, it's, it's projected to go back down. That's correct. And then it's also with the district, um, reducing or limiting, not levying and funding for the upcoming year.
Oh, right. Does that help, Chris?
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to be super transparent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, all right, are we ready to vote? I'll start at the next person this time. Is that Katie Avalos?
Aye.
Karen Cromwell?
Aye.
Danielle Bailey?
Aye.
Uh, Chris Robinson?
Aye.
And Carla Pennington Cross also votes aye. The motion passes. And I want to take a moment to thank our community, community members for speaking, for asking questions and for participating and for challenging, questioning. It's really important for us to hear your concerns and, and know what's on people's minds. And thank, uh, our representative from Baird for, for being here to support us. Thank you. All right, onward, item C, business office update.
So, um, the business office, the information we have to provide is, um, I'll start with the executive summary, July twenty twenty-four financial report. Um, as a reminder, policy sixty-two thirty-one calls for listings of expenditures and appropriate financial reports to be submitted monthly to the school board to, um, keep you informed of the status of the budget and financial condition of the district. In your packet, we have presented with you checks that were issued during the month of July for board approval. This includes checks for payment of payroll benefits and deductions as well. Just a side note, updated or continued information that, um, the checks issued for payment to have liabilities in there and expenditures. So the liabilities, um, could be last year's expenditures and also expenses that, um, items that were expensed during the payroll process. And then, um, now then they became liabilities and we pay them. So you'll see both in there. Uh, the monthly summary of payroll benefits and A and P payments. And, um, this is a new report showing the amount of pay and benefits processed through payroll in July. Retiree benefit payments and the non-payroll related payment transactions in July twenty twenty-four, um, is provided for your review. This report, um, includes teaching staff summary of benefits that are expensed to the previous fiscal year when they were hurt. So I included that in this report so that you can see, um, what the average payroll looks like so that, you know, um, as far as the board providing oversight, you can see, you know, month to month, you may not see all the details, but just looking to see what is that cost usually? And if you see something unusual, we should have an explanation for you on that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And then the twenty-four, twenty-five, um, report paid expenses by object. This is for the month of July and it is for, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five expenses. So that is going to vary, um, the dollar amount from what you would see in the, um, paychecks, the check, vendor check and the summary of payroll benefits and A and P payments. Are there any questions?
Any questions from board members? I, I would like to say, um, thank you a million times. And you're gonna get sick of my gratitude, but maybe not yet. Um, for the clarity of these reports. And I think what our community members don't see is that we have peppered you with questions through email, all of which is, you know, open records if you need them, or you can contact us or contact Michelle. But we are getting a lot of information and detail and learning from Michelle as she presents reports like this to us. I think, um, apropos of concerns that have been raised about transparency, I, i- if you haven't seen what Michelle has created is very, very clear. Look simple on its face and that's how we know it's kind of hard to plan and put together really simple information when it comes to finances. We have this really clear kind of nine or ten line report showing up with us what payroll is each month. And so as Anna explained to me, what this does for us as board members, volunteer, part-time people, is it tells us what our payroll should be. It should not change from month to month unless something has happened. So some of what had happened in the last year and the year before was us not knowing about hires. With this clear report, that can't happen. It can't be masked or hidden. Um, because this information is here and if we see a change, um, we'll know to ask. And so I really appreciate that transparency and the invisible work that's behind this. So thank you for that. Anything else? Okay, um, is there a motion to approve the July financials? Which are in the documents that are attached on the agenda.
I move to approve the July twenty twenty-four financials. Second.
Any further discussion? Visitors, any comments? Mr. Martin?
So for clarification on the reports and that's issued the check register, there are a few negative numbers. And I was just wanting to have a brief explanation as to why there are.
Yeah, those are waiting checks.
That explains what the check type is.
You could also, now it's not on here, but if there was a revenue offsetting something, you may see that as well as a negative.
And there is one number that is entirely blotted out along with the description. I was wondering if you could describe what that, or tell me what that number was. It's checked.
Yeah, that was a check for transportation and that is actually, I don't believe the dollar amount is flooded out. I believe it had, um, information's names possibly. So those are flooded out. Oh, what, at the top, yeah.
Good.
Yeah. And then there, uh, there was another one too for, um, that was, um, it was employee names for, um, pre-employment testing.
There, there is one that does have the dollar value flooded out for the third line on the second page.
Eight, one, two, one, eight. Is that what you're looking at?
Yes, the second line. Let me look at the check number, eight, one, two, one, eight.
Part of the first one. There's three check numbers. Same check number?
Yeah, three line, three line items with one check number.
That would be the name that's flooded out. Yeah, I could, I could look it up, take a few.
I'll get back to that later on that.
Okay. But to reiterate that, use the same check number. But yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Okay, uh, there's a motion and a second to approve the, the financials for July. All in favor?
Aye, 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 aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries on to item D. Facilities, summer cleaning and maintenance report.
Yes, thank you. Um, the purpose of this report is just to update the board on the work that has been done over the summer. Um, one of the things that, um, sort of the unseen work that happens, um, in our, our buildings, um, during the summer months to make sure that we are able to welcome both our staff and our students back to our school that has been cleaned and scrubbed from head to toe and that is ready for them to, to welcome them back. Um, first and foremost, I would like to thank the staff members for their hard work and dedication throughout summer cleaning. Um, at Parkway Elementary, Kevin Conkle was our head custodian. Um, Ed Miller, our custodian, Zach Truski, a summer cleaner, and Donna Flowers, another summer cleaner. In addition to that, I would like to thank at Glen Hills Middle School, Brandon Leslie, our head custodian. Um, Pauline Rosnick, our custodian, Tyler Jensen's, one of our custodians. Um, Jaime Enzaldo, a custodian, Zach Williams, a summer cleaner, Malika Hunt, summer cleaner. Kristen Josephek, a summer cleaner, and Lenia Tate, summer cleaner. And I also want to give a huge shout out to, um, somebody that I forgot to put on here is Cindy Wick, who has been doing an amazing job painting um, our school building in different areas, making it look really presentable. She's done an outstanding job of that as well. Um, the scope of our summer cleaning and maintenance, um, is laid out for the board's review. Um, taking a look at the fact that in our classrooms, all of the current furniture needs to be hand cleaned with sponges. Um, this is work that our custodians and summer cleaners engage in. Um, furniture is removed from the classroom. Our trash and recycling bins are all cleaned and dried. Windows are cleaned and carpet and tile sections are cleaned, scrubbed and backed. Um, they address our staff repairs. They're taking all of our circle rugs and morning meeting rugs out and moving them out and cleaning them all. Um, any classrooms with restrooms, they follow our class, our restroom cleaning procedures with. Um, in addition to that, in our restrooms, all floors, walls and surfaces are treated with disinfectant and scrubbed down as well as our sinks, toilets and um, urinals are scoured. Floors are cleaned. Um, and then after that, the restaurants are cleaned, they're closed down and wet vacuumed. Um, all the supplies are replenished and automatic sinks and toilets are checked and repaired immediately. Our hallways and entryways and lockers and vestibles are all glasses clean, lockers are opened, emptied and vacuumed and washed. Our hallway carpet is vacuumed and cleaned. Any areas needing replacement in the carpet are replaced. Um, our, our door mats are taken outdoors and cleaned with a scrubber. Our gym floors are refinished and waxed and polished by outside contractors. Um, our windows are all cleaned, sprayed, scrubbed, dried. Um, locker rooms, showers and showerheads are cleaned with disinfectant. Our walls, floors and ledges are scrubbed down and closed down. And all the restaurants are also cleaned in those spaces. In our pool area at Glen Hills, um, we are checking chemicals daily, but black flush filters, bibbly and emptying, um, strainer baskets as needed. The last weeks of summer, once we're done with swimming lessons here, the pumps are shut down, the pool search tanks are emptied. Um, we scrape and power wash debris from the floors and the walls and we refill the tank and balance the chemicals. Um, our kitchen and cafeteria is all cleaned, HVAC filters are replaced, and our grease traps are cleaned by outside service personnel. Um, our roofs, drains on roofs are unclogged and debris is moved. Our HVAC filters are cleaned. At Glen Hills, we are having the roof at the front of the building repaired to address some leaking that is happening, um, in the main part of the building. And then our exterior outdoors unlimited is mowing and trimming our properties. They also treat our baseball diamonds and tennis courts. Um, two trees were removed this summer at Glen Hills Middle School. One was, um, dead and the other had been struck by lightning and was unstable. Um, maintenance of the courtyard area at Parkway is done. Um, clearing of the debris from our properties in support of our maintenance of the outdoor classroom at Glen Hills Middle School. And then we also had the resealing of the lots to preserve concrete, concrete, um, performed by an outside service. Um, this list is incredibly exhaustive. I wanted to kind of pilot to, to show, um, both our community and the board the incredible work that our custodial staff does. Um, it is a heavy lift. We can't do this work without them and they are ready and they are on the spot to help us at all, all turns. And I just am incredibly appreciative of their work.
Any comments or questions from board members?
That's a really impressive amount of work that they get done and really not that much time. And, and I would say, Katie and I know from the engagement days, these crews are not only effective and hardworking, but they're also really cheerful and helpful. And they're role models for helpful, can-do, just digging in and being part of the community attitudes. And I'm going to make myself cry, but in the hardest times, I always know I can turn to one of our custodial staff and get the lift I need because, gosh, they do some of the worst and hardest work in our buildings. And I just, I don't know how they do it in such a good mood. I know I wouldn't be able to. So I hope you'll share with them our collective gratitude for all their hard work.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's merely informational, so we don't have to vote on anything. Next, certified educator handbook.
So agenda item four E. So based on our school district policy three, two, two, zero, it outlines for an appropriate and approved educator effectiveness program for the evaluation of teachers and principals in our district. The attached GDRH Effectiveness Handbook for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year outlines the process, timeline and criteria. It is recommended that it will be made to approve the twenty-two, twenty-five education, educator effectiveness handbook. Just a little background on some of the handbook components. The state of Wisconsin outlines the Danielson model as educator effectiveness model as being a way to look at our school improvement plan and our work around teachers and their evaluation process. I open by letting our teachers know in this book that their growth is important to the education of our children. It's important to their professional work and that the goal of our evaluational process is to help provide them with the feedback that they need in order to, to have that professional growth. The areas of concentration that are focused on within the educator effectiveness handbook are really looking at the domains in the Danielson model and a strong focus on those areas that we feel are going to leverage our strategic plan, the pillars of our strategic plan and where we want to go. So we will be looking at setting instructional outcomes because we know that clarity for our students and our staff and the work that they enter into with students is going to yield strong outcomes. We know that cultivating respectful and affirming environments, domain two for our learning environments. We believe that that is the foundation of our educational experiences and really taps into the pillar around whole child growth and development as well as our equity non-negotiables. Domain three, learning experience, engaging students of learning. And this means engaging them at high levels and ensuring that equity is taken place at the highest level. The other area that will be focused on in the teacher evaluation rubric is principal teaching. So contributing to the school, community and culture, which also reflects the value of our pillars in terms of making sure that we have an empowered community and, and making sure that teachers are exceptional in their work through their ability to collaborate and support and lift one another in work. So those are the areas that are outlined for our teachers to be focused on in our evaluation processes. For our administrator evaluation, we are focused on the principal framework for leadership to assess and administer practice for our principals and other administrators in our district. And it is also structured to align with the Danielson framework. And again, focused on the areas to help support those strategic goals. So domain one would be developing effective educators. And this would be on performance evaluation and feedback and our ability for our principals and other administrators to provide effective and timely feedback to our staff. Also that they are aligned within our vision and mission, which as we roll out our strategic plan, it's a huge lift for them to make sure that their actions and actions of staff and the actions of the school and policies and procedures that are laid out in the school are aligned with those visions. And then additionally, looking at leadership actions. So time management and priority setting. So ensuring that we are holding up that strategic plan and saying, are, are the actions that we're taking in our work aligned to those pieces? As well as looking at financial management, as we know that this is an area of continued growth in an area that requires all administrators in this, in this district to have eyes on it and to work collaboratively with Michelle and one another to support. So those are the areas that we're looking at evaluating in this particular.
Okay, any, any motion?
I move to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five educator effectiveness. Second.
Okay, discussion?
On the whole, I think this looks excellent and I apologize because I suggest emailing, but there's just a few typos. So I would just, that would be the only thing. And it's very hard to have comprehensive educator effectiveness when you have a variety of specialties, as I personally don't. So I appreciate that there's a lot of effort being made for that. I, I love the idea of stacking evaluative models through all layers. Anna and I have talked about this offline, but the way she's aligning teacher efficacy to administrator efficacy, I would love to see that continue up. That when we come to workshop in the next couple of months and talk about superintendent evaluation and self-evaluation and three sixty of the board, that if we could, I would love to see us continue this model and have all of our lenses focused on strategic plan the way we're, we're doing at the bottom. So something to think about. I don't know what that would look like or if it's possible, but I just want you to know that I've been thinking about that as a great way to get us, there's some language you use like for efficacy, like getting us all in one mind and one space, working towards the same thing. Be really cool if we were part of that because then we would also be able to see where our appropriate role, not only as a whole board, but as individual board members is in that oversight of that process. So I'm kind of really excited about this, probably too excited. But the idea of having really, really clear vision of what we do and why and how we can add value is very exciting to me.
I just want to make sure I under, understand. So the timeline for evaluation for supporting years. So every year that there's not a formal evaluation, staff does like a peer-to-peer type of evaluation. Is that new? Is that something we've always liked? I guess I've never seen this before. And so thank you for sharing it with us because it's not that we haven't asked. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm like, was this, this has always existed? Did you update this? How was this? I don't know. I appreciate it very much. Yeah, so it's a pretty, it's a pretty standard protocol that all teachers within their first year of education within the building and typically within a role within a building are evaluated. And usually it's the first three years are considered the period of induction. So any of our, our new teachers to the building within those first three years are, are evaluated. And after that first year, we can make that determination. So when, we wouldn't have the capacity as administrators to evaluate every teacher in this building using this whole role model to make, you, you can see there that we go into those classrooms and we get feedback around that and when teachers are in their, in their supporting year, not their summer year. Having a peer-to-peer evaluation is something that is pretty typical. It's a pretty typical model that's used. One of the ways that we would like to make sure that we're structuring this year though, is just making sure that all of our staff have identified an accountability partner for that work. Because I think those are things that we talk a lot about in our practices as educators, right? And so it's easy to say, yep, I'm going to check in with somebody, but knowing who that accountability partner is and doing some self-reflection with them and some reflection on teacher practice is, is strong and helpful. So we want to make sure that we're capturing that as well. And then also for all these positions that are listed under tools for evaluation, is the evaluator, the principal for all of these people except for the administrator? Yeah, so I think that's a really great question. Also, within those rubrics for some of those specialty fields, as I think Karen was trying to get at, the work of an occupational therapist, for example, is very different than the work of a classroom teacher in many ways. And so the way that we look at that practice is it varies. So those particular areas, so you're seeing the teacher evaluation. Those particular areas have their own rubrics and criteria that are shared with those staff. Based on goal, we do split up as an administrative team to say who's, who's evaluating based on our areas of expertise. So it would probably be common that, you know, Kelly Weiss Blacky would be, you know, looking at the practices of those teachers and specialists and service providers so that she has been able to provide holistic feedback to them. That's pretty cool.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Visitors, anyone wish to make any comments or ask any questions?
All right, all in favor of approving the twenty-four, twenty-five Glendale River Hills Educator Effectiveness Handbook? Say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Not opposed, but I just want to approve it with the ability of required typos.
With the typos to be correct.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Item five, board member reports. And this is Ms. Robinson.
All right, we, this was introduced actually pretty well earlier in the, in the meeting. But as your WOSB rep in January, I'll go to the, to the delegate assembly where as a group, we will be recommending what WOSB should spend its lobbying legislative time on. And at a prior meeting, I had suggested that we write up something regarding funding of disabilities. Well, I'm smarter than I was then and I found that, and actually such a thing already exists in their published book. So we still have the ability to make amendments if something is missing or to rewrite if anyone wants to do that. I personally thought it was pretty comprehensive. I did send a copy to Kelly to, to make sure that nothing was missing from her expert opinion. So if we do nothing, you know, this stays in their book. If we want a change, we would have to at our next meeting approve the change and then we have to submit it by a September fifteenth deadline. And then the group would talk about it and meet about it in January. So I, I know I sent out an email to everybody so you could see it. No one mentioned any changes. So did anyone have any changes?
I do not have any changes off the top of my head, but I am wondering if there is, oh, maybe there is a benefit to us looking for some meaningful change, right? Like, but to actually bring this up again, to have that conversation, to raise the awareness, to raise, you know, if there's a way to create an opportunity for advocacy or perhaps this isn't the right thing because there already exists, but it allows us to leverage what exists in a different way. I guess that was something that had occurred to me while I was sitting here. Yeah, meaningful language change. I don't want to like change a verb.
I guess I would ask, does meaningful language change lead to meaningful change? Or maybe we just look at how we advocate.
Right, but I mean, I think, but, right, so not change.
Right, okay.
Sorry, I might have been there, but.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I feel like this is pretty legalistic. And as we are doing our advocacy, we would certainly put it in friendlier tones, I think. But I think it addressed, you know, when I went back to our notes of everything that we had talked about, to me it seems to address all of it.
The, when I looked at it and I, it, it does kind of make my eyes kind of swim as I think of it. One, one thing you and I have talked about in the past is this issue that when you take a private school voucher, the student can be kicked back to the public school by the private school at any time after the third Friday count in September, right? But they get to keep the money, right? Is that addressed in this?
I think it is.
I couldn't figure it out.
Funding that follows the student, yeah, funding that follows the student on a pro-rated basis within the school year rather than being targeted to the district. That's how I interpret that.
Because I wonder, so I read that, right? And I thought, ah, but it says district and not the private school. So that's the only question I had, but I'm not sentient enough on this. I haven't thought about it enough, like whether there's, stays in here for a very plain statement about school vouchers, that the funds should follow the student back if they're kicked out.
Well, tell you what, if you'd like, I could follow up with WOSB and make sure that that is exactly what that means.
Awesome, thank you. And maybe provide some like clarification on it. Maybe it doesn't seem very clear to the layperson. Well, who is not the audience for this, right? I mean, this is.
Right, right. But I think if, if we wanted to give feedback, what we would do is write an amendment, pass an amendment and then advance the amendment.
Oh, I see. From our board.
From our board, yeah. And we would need to do that at the next meeting because it's due to that on September fifteenth.
An alternative that I would consider, because we went through this with then win, is that we have delegated to you as our rep, the authority to speak for this board. I, we would have to think about it, but I'm not sure that you need us to approve a proposed change to this as you already have our delegated authority.
It was pretty, pretty clear in what I read that the board absolutely needs to pass a resolution in order to advance a resolution to WOSB.
Gotcha. It's a WOSB rule.
It's a WOSB rule.
Got it, okay.
I would, I would just suggest maybe we look at advocacy as a workshop or as a community engagement piece and where we want to put our energy. Because I'm sure putting our energy into the WOSB resolutions is the most effective way to impact change.
It's good, it's good to have it out there, but. And I want to say thank you, Chris, for doing this like comprehensive detailed work that you do. That again, is sometimes invisible to the public, but your expertise and wisdom you bring to all this is something I, I personally value so much. I appreciate it.
Thanks. So I will, I will follow up with WOSB and make sure that we're interpreting this the correct way because it's not then amendment.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, woo, almost there. Item six on the agenda is closed session.
Zero motion.
Motion to recess into closed session for section nineteen point eight, five, one, C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility specifically to review personnel changes.
Second. All right, I have to do a roll call vote. Chris Robinson.
I.
Katie Avalos.
I.
Karen Cromwell.
I.
Danielle Bailey.
I.
Karen, the next cross votes, aye. Motion passes, we're in closed session for visitors here. We may come back into open and have some sort of votes around employment issues, but it will be, it will be not that much. So that'll be it after that.
No surprises about upcoming agendas.
No.
All right.
Thank you for coming, visitors, all of you, and we're off to closed session. All right, we're back in open session. Are there any motions arising out of our closed session discussion?
Yes. I would like to move to approve the hire of Diana Knight as an executive assistant to teaching and learning and superintendent as discussed in closed session. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Any other motions?
I'll move to approve the hire of Adam Barant, say, all right, Barant, as a sixth grade ELA teacher at Glen Hills.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the motion passes.
Welcome to the district.
Welcome. All right, moving on to our meeting closing section of the agenda. Item seven, A, review of two due items. Anyone have anything they wish to add that is on mind?
I believe I committed to clarifying that one state in a WOSB resolution.
Okay.
I had one, as, as we were talking about facility or the maintenance, I was just thinking about buildings and grounds and I didn't recall when, not recalling exactly how we left that and if that will be, I'm assuming that will be coming around again and I know there's one. So just maybe an update on that.
I do want to clarify, you know, like the, the maintenance plan for.
No, no, I was thinking about like.
No, no, I was thinking about, like, uh, do we need a building and ground strike? Like, like, my coordinating network.
Yeah, so we, in part of our restructuring last year, we need Kevin Cockle, custodian at Parkway and Brian Lovely here, it's their key through sharing that responsibility and probably some of the two have done in terms of that, and Michelle and I are meeting with them weekly at this.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure, yeah, I need a refresher.
Yep.
Sorry. No, I would, no, that's a good question. I want to make sure that my wife will clarify that.
Can, do we want to keep the employee handbook on the list or are we taking it off for now? I know we'll probably revisit it later, months away. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And maybe it's a workshop. We've talked about, maybe it's a workshop during the winter, late winter to kind of dig into the employee handbook and see if it's doing what it needs to do, working within that policy.
So nothing. I mean, do we need to add something in particular to communications and?
Right, that is a big to-do item, like communication plan through November. And then we're gonna have our workshop as our second meeting in September where we're gonna be talking about communications as well as possibly superintendent evaluation. So we'll circle back for that.
Danielle, I think you were the one that suggested a workshop on advocacy, so.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's singing my song too, of course. Add that to the list of potential workshop topics. Can we just have one giant, like, one week long workshop where we do everything we want to do just now? Okay, no other shows.
All right, any other to-do items people are thinking about? All right, moving on to Item 7B, Future Agenda Topics. Anyone wish to raise any future agenda topics at this time? That you feel are missing or being overseen in particular, overlooked, I mean. All right. Moving on to Item 7C, Board Making Debrief. Anyone wish to comment? Debrief us?
Uh, I want to thank you for granting us the beginning of the meeting. It's, I think it's always good to have a that kind of focus, and I appreciate all the gratitude you share for everyone's, and I think I, I want to do a better job of listening. I think, like, I don't know, I just feel like I want to keep improving on, like, really listening and hearing and not necessarily reacting or perceiving, you know, that's what it, uh, yeah, not needing to respond. Anyone else wish to share?
I think I would just kind of echo similar to Danielle. I I feel like even though I've even said in these meetings, it's very easy for us because we're so close and so involved and so and so invested in the work that we feel like all that information has been available. We've been very clear. The truth is when the community members come to us and say that there are people who don't know, that's really key information. And it's, and and trying to figure out, I think what what's complicated is how do we truly figure out how to get that information to the people who will say that they didn't get it, but also are perhaps not looking for it in places that we have it. So then how do you get to figure out how to get it into the right spaces? Because I would agree, it's very, like, my first reaction is like, yes, but, and it should be yes, and, right? Like, yes, and this. And so really trying to not just engage with the one-on-one community who reach out to us, but also recognizing there's a lot of people who, you know, they'll just say, we, they won't hold me. And that would be true. And also there's some pieces to that that everybody takes ownership of. And yet, you're the ones who take ownership of this. In order for this to really thrive, you've got to figure out how to meet them where they're at, even if you know, where they're at is not quite where we hope for them to be.
Well, we're trying to mimic teachers in doing that. You teach a student where you find them, right? Not where you wish, where it would be easy for us, right?
Well, we're trying to, we're, yeah, I think it's it's a question, more so it's it's kind of along that lines of what Anna and I were talking about today, like, it's the students who don't get here. Like, we're trying to figure out how to educate the people who haven't gotten here yet. So how do we, yeah, how do we do that for sure?
Anyone else?
I would like to echo what I said last time, that I'm so impressed the amount of preparation and organization that's going into these meetings. This was a really dense meeting and it's still just over two hours. Like, like, I'm kind of, my mind is just blown.
Thank you. I'm practicing saying thank you and taking ownership of success, which I'm not good at. I only self-criticize, but, yeah. Thank you, Anna. Thank you, Michelle, and staff and everyone who's making this happen very quickly. And I think it helps that we are not going off topic. I think each of us individually is doing a really great job of staying on on task.
For norms?
For norms, yeah. So I guess if I had to debrief, that would be what I'd say, that I really appreciate the focus and preparation of every member of this board. It just, it just makes everything so much easier and more comprehensive. I I feel like I'm taking away more in less time because we're focused, so, thank you. All right, Anna, would you like to say anything?
Oh, no, Chris is good.
Chris is cheshire catting us.
I I guess I agree with everything that everyone has said, and, you know, excellent facilitation. Like, you, I mean, you not only prepared everything, but you thought about how to bring it out, so.
Actually, I would, I would add, I would like the statement that you read. I'd like to explore publishing that sometime.
I I will, I I, Danielle and I had already talked about this. I could put it on my Facebook, Carla Running for Board President page, or Running for the Board page, but I don't know.
Or maybe, I mean, it was a board representative saying it.
Yeah, we can talk about it.
Kind of more formal.
Okay, sure, and? That's right, it could be the board president's statement.
Yeah, yeah, like similar to how Danielle did those.
Right, okay. I'll connect with Anna.
Yeah.
We'll see, because I think it was extremely well thought.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. It was too long, though.
No, it was.
Anything else?
Thank you for your preparation. Keep asking questions, keep asking for transparency, because that's part deliverable that we need to be able to provide to you as well.
And thank you, Mr. Martin, for showing up every time. We appreciate it.
I will make you all sit in me at some point.
I reject that hypothesis.
To adjourn.
May I?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.